Good evening and welcome everyone to the Holly Township Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. This is our regular meeting and today is August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Wednesday. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and and start by doing the pledge of allegiance, please. Stan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next, uh, roll call. And I know the manager has walked out temporarily, so I'm going to, I'm going to go through the roll call unless the vice chair, would you mind?
No, not at all.
Vice chairman.
Commissioner DeSessa.
Here.
Commissioner Carl.
Here.
Commissioner Hutchins.
Here.
Commissioner Wright here. Commissioner Earl.
Commissioner Earl contacted me and asked to be excused from this meeting. Do I have a motion to excuse her?
I'll make a motion to excuse Cindy Earl from tonight's meeting.
Sorry, I second.
Okay, very good. Okay, second. So the motion was made by Commissioner Hutchins and second by Commissioner Carl. I'm just gonna do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who wish to vote nay. Hearing none, motion passes. Next is the approval of the minutes. And this is, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the July ninth uh, two thousand and twenty-five meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes for the Holly Township Parks Commission regular meeting of July ninth twenty-five. Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Commissioner Wright and supported by Commissioner Hudson, Hutchins. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion pass. Next is the approval of the agenda or any changes to the agenda. And under this item, we just have an item and the motion is to approve the agenda.
Actually, Chairperson DeSessa.
Yes.
Uh, there's a second set of minutes for the website committee.
Oh, the way, okay, I don't see, I didn't see it on the agenda, I'm sorry, but I'd be happy to go back.
You know, I'm sorry.
No.
I make the motion to amend the agenda to include the draft minutes of the Social Media and Website Committee regular meeting minutes of July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay. Well, these are very good minutes. Excellent. So the way we normally do this, since we have to add it, I'll move it to the end of the agenda and we can undo that. And we will add it as item number number nine C.
Nine C?
Nine, um, yes, could we have reports? I mean, I'm sorry, eleven, my goodness, I think was that one, eight? Yeah, there should be a nine, not a, not eleven.
Number eight.
And then the other one, public comment should be ten, eleven. So we're just missing a nine, it's just a typo there. Knew there was, I saw eight, okay, nine, so it'll be nine C. This is minutes for
Eight C.
Social.
You, sorry, you wouldn't put it under
You put it under A F.
Four B?
Madam, cure.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Um, I, I wonder if I back my, my motion. Uh, the reason I'm doing that is because these are draft minutes, they have not been by the committee yet.
Committee, okay.
Um, basically, the, they were included in your packet as a reference.
Okay, so that's probably why they weren't a, a, attached. Can I make a suggestion to, because ordinarily, ordinarily, the, this commission would not approve your minutes. And you've indicated, you're the ones that do it. I would, I could say we could only, we could accept. We would have the motion to accept the minutes, okay? So at the next meeting, please, when, uh, next month, we will add those items. So we will remove this item from the agenda completely. Can we, uh, have a motion, however, just to correct the numbering? So it's, uh, five, six, seven, eight. And then nine and eleven. Everything else is fine. Can I have a motion to correct the minutes, just to make that one little adjustment, please?
I make that motion to correct the agenda item, um, changing reports to eight. I'm sorry, reports to nine.
Okay. So number nine, very good. By Commissioner Wright, is there a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Carl. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes. Now, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted or amended in this case?
Make that motion to approve the agenda as corrected. Or amended.
Or it should be amended.
Amended. Support.
Okay. So motion to approve the agenda as amended by Commissioner Wright and supported by Commissioner Hutchins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passive. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is item number six, public comment. Members of the public can address the commission once recognized by the chairperson for items listed on this agenda only. Comments are limited to four minutes. The commission may extend this time by up to an additional four minutes by majority vote. Prior to addressing the commission, members of the public are asked to state their name and street name for the record. I am looking and I do not see anyone here for public comment, so I will move from that, okay? So moving right along. Next, we go to item number seven, old business. Uh, this is to discuss and approve the contract with Vanguard Fire and Security Systems, Inc. That I'll turn it over to our manager. Madam manager?
Thank you. Um, if you recall, our last, um, probably, uh, I think March, April, we started, uh, discussing with Vanguard for, uh, removing the dry chemical fire suppression system that we have both in the attic and in our garage. Uh, the fire chief, uh, assistant fire chief for the village of Holly did come out and do an assessment and he felt that it was not necessary that we continue to have those. When we had Vanguard come out, they were the people who originally put that, uh, system together. Uh, they had, uh, said that they felt that it, um, would require two people to come out and that and, uh, Joe, um, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Hutchins felt that it was not necessary that they go to that length. Um, and it was going to cost nine hundred and thirty dollars to remove it at that time. Um, so, uh, Joe, um, had actually spoken directly with Brandon Thomas, who, from Vanguard, who I had been in contact with. Uh, Joe explained to him what he felt, uh, was a better way to deal with it. That, uh, Joe had a plan in mind and we could have some of our own staff be involved. Um, and that Vanguard then would take the two dry chemical tanks once they were removed from the building and take those. Uh, and Vanguard was going to charge us at that point five hundred and forty dollars. And, um, the fire chief was fine with that, uh, once they were removed. And then, um, Commissioner Hutchins, uh, would be able to remove the rest of the system, uh, once that's completed. So, um, I think that's where we're at right now is to, uh, vote on whether uh, we want to go ahead with the five hundred and forty dollar charge for Vanguard to, um, come out. They're gonna send, uh, people out, uh, they're gonna have a two, two hour, uh, time limit here when normally they would charge for four hours. And that's part of the reduction in the cost, but they are going to take the two, um, dry chemical tanks.
Very good. Are there any questions?
I had one.
Commissioner?
Um, just a quick, quick, is this, uh, the, the system required to be taken out? Is there a reason that it's needing to be taken out? I, I know, uh, it's been stated that it's way too much for what we have here. However, is that the only reason it needs to be taken out or is there a another reason?
I don't know that it necessarily needs to be taken out, however, um, the system is obsolete as it is. And so what, uh, the fire chief recommended was to go ahead and put an extra fire extinguisher in the garage, which, uh, Mr. Hutchins had already heard that. I don't know, what do you think?
As fire chief mentioned, that we don't want to, leaving the old system intact gives the impression that we have a full fire suppression system that works and it doesn't work. So he said, out of sight, out of mind. So it doesn't lead to a, a false security system that we have a full suppression system. We can't, they can't get parts for that system anymore. And it costs a bunch to, you know, redo it and it, by code, we went through the, uh, village fire department and building code and that was not required by code at the time of installation.
Very good. Any other questions? I guess I, I just have a, a, a comment. I understand, I mean, this, this facility is, is pretty old, it's pretty old now. And so I know that things do need to be updated. I am, I'm confident, thanks to the review that was done by the fire chief, that this is, this will do for now. But perhaps in the future, we can work with them a little closer and see if we can maybe someday, you know, maybe take that leap and, uh, and maybe, uh, spend a little bit more, more dollars as available to do a, a true full, I know you're looking at fire suppression system, not now, but someday perhaps, or maybe something. I know, I know with technology changing, maybe in the future, we might be able to do something like that. So it's more of a comment. Keep on the lookout for that. Continue to work with our fire department to make sure that, that, um, we have all the safety precautions that we can take should a fire occur.
That's why we had them come out, they surveyed the, 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 this and the pole wire and gave us recommendations and we satisfied the village fire chief.
Excellent, excellent.
With the new fire suppression system we have.
Excellent.
Which, pardon me, is tanks that you take off the wall and it needs a human being. I think your point is if we weren't here, closed hours and there was a fire, we would be
Yeah, we, we would.
On the creek without.
Well, we could take the tanks and use them and, and, you know, douse the fire. Of course, we would call the fire department as well and they'd be here within minutes. But again, you never know. I mean, even if you have a full pledge fire system, it, it can happen. I'm just thinking for safety purposes.
It's a point.
In the future, in the future. But that was just, that was just a concern and, and just a perhaps. The only other thing that I'd like to ask madam manager is, um, can we make sure that our staff knows how to use, uh, the, the extinguishers and perhaps maybe even us, because I, I'm not familiar. So if we're here, maybe the fire chief or, or you or someone can come and show us how to use, you know how to use it?
Yes, I know how, so does Tom, our, Tom, our one employee was a fire.
Our maintenance person. Oh, that's right, he was.
Yeah, so it, you pull the pin and squirt at the base of the fire.
Okay. That's, that sounds easy. Okay, I can, I, I'm, I'm envisioning, envisioning a Lucy episode. Okay, I'm moving right along. Okay, is there a motion to approve the contract with Vanguard Fire and Security Systems for five hundred and forty dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hutchins, is there a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wright. Although, oh, no, this occurs money, so, uh, let's do a roll call vote. I would like to ask our vice chair to please continue in the roll call, or call, please.
Carl?
Approved.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright, yes. DeSessa?
Yes. Four zero, motion passed. Very good, thank you. And thank you, uh, madam manager for bringing this to our attention, appreciate it. Next, moving on to item number seven or eight, there we go, eight, new business. First item, A, is to discuss and approve selling used playground equipment to the village of Holly Parks Department. Um, now, I'm, I'm gonna turn this over to our commissioner Hutchins, because he's the one that's been working with the village on this. I've been, I've been, uh, to a couple of meetings since I've been appointed. And all I can tell you is I know that, uh, they are looking to, uh, to purchase these equipment. But for the public, uh, Commissioner Hutchins, can you describe what, what they're looking to acquire from us? And then maybe if the manager knows anything about costs. Um, I know that they're hoping that we give it to them as some sort of discount, but that's not the way the, the rules read. Uh, we can sell it to them at, at our cost. These are tax dollars and, uh, and you go from there. But Commissioner Hutchins, can you give us summation on this real quick?
Years ago, um, we bought two, uh, spring toys. Uh, the new ones that are approved for parks and wrecks and we never mounted them. We have two of them and they're at the beach in the storage area. And the town, the village would like to buy them for their parks.
So can I clarify? So you're only looking to sell two and they're, they have not been used?
No, they're brand new.
Okay.
They're the new ones. The old ones are illegal because they're, they're made out of metal, these new ones are plastic and they don't have any pinch points. And we have about four or five old used ones that, uh, the, the village said that, and when they have their, uh, auction, they'd put our old ones in their auction and sell those to private individuals and they'd make the check out to Holly Township Parks. So we have the old style with the pinch points that are, aren't legal for park use.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify because I printed out some, but these are the metal ones, I think. So the, these ones that I had printed out just for the sake of the cost of it, uh, these would not be the ones we'd be looking at then.
We'd have to go back and use some more research. How much, we're just, just curious, how much would the metals, the metal ones cost today?
Well, these were, they were, um, they were five hundred dollars, three fifty and four eighty-five and the four eighty-five one was without the springs either.
Oh, my.
Wow, but thanks for clarifying because I wasn't sure on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, madam manager, do we know how much we paid for them originally? Is there any way we can find out?
I have no clue.
Those were purchased probably ten years ago. And the only thing I, I can remember, but I don't have no clue, well, we were back then was four and a half. That was eight, ten years ago. Price of everything went up.
I think if we, if we were, if, if the commission decided that they wanted to sell, sell these, it would, it would be at market, at market rate and that's all we would, we would ask for. Uh, because these are, this is tax dollars, we don't want to, you know, overtax our dollar, our taxpayers again. And, uh, and we're just going between, between taxing entities, so, um, is there any motion as to any action that the commission wishes to take or, or what, what is your desire on this item?
Could have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I understand that we would be selling to the village of Holly Parks Department, correct?
It'd be to the village of Holly.
To the village of Holly. Okay. Um, there's no conflict of interest. If I, I had something to, to read, if I
Yes, please do.
Um, for the public, uh, Commissioner DeSessa and Commissioner Hutchins, members of the village of Holly Parks. Um, I understand that they serve on the purpose of, based on my understanding of Michigan contract of public service, but public entity that there does not appear to feel derivative, financial conflict of interest in this matter. Any conflict here would be a disturbance of conduct rather than actual sketch for the participation and, uh, voting on this, uh, matter is legally acceptable if the commissioners are comfortable doing so. I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. I'm so glad you read that, sir. I, I was not here when, when those items were, were acquired. Um, again, I'm looking to sell them at market rates. And again, this is something that the, uh, voters of, of the village of Holly can utilize. I, I have no qualms. I don't know about Commissioner Hutchins. Nope, nope, okay. It was so long ago, these items were purchased, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, uh, I, I would like to at least, uh, a, ask our manager to find out how much something like this would cost. And, uh, before we come up with the price, I mean, I know you said four fifty, but
I, I do believe though, the ones that I quoted you were, um, the older metal and more like the collector kind of things and that, not the type that Commissioner Hutchins is talking about.
Okay. Any questions? Should we postpone this until the manager comes back with a price? Would you, should we do that or, or would you?
Well, it should be tabled.
Tabled, or table, that's what I meant, postponed table. Is there a motion?
Sort of, the table.
Okay. Motion to table this item to gather more information regarding the cost.
Of the plastic.
Of the plastic.
Ponies, yeah.
Last.
Of the, of the new legal one.
I would like, um, to mention, we should probably look at opportunities to sell the, the former, the metal one.
That's what we had just stated. Village is gonna have an auction and Brian Clausen said we could put them in their auction.
Okay.
Sell them and the, the, whoever buys them, the money will be, the checks will be made out to Holly Township Parks.
All right, okay. You did say that.
I think there's four or five of them and I think just offhand, it depends on who wants them. Fifty to a hundred bucks a piece. Some of them have broken springs, so they have to buy parts for it. They had to put it in your own yard.
When is that auction?
Uh, it's coming up, I hear, September or something like that.
And if they don't sell, I think we could look even, uh, Facebook Marketplace.
Yeah.
It's got a pretty good audience.
I think as long as, or we could just, uh, post it and, uh, and let anyone submit a bid. That's why I like, I like the auction because anyone can go out there and bid for it.
Yeah.
And, uh, get it. And it's open to everyone. And, and, and that's the other, the other thing that I like about the auction as well. Okay, all right, so there was a motion by Commissioner Hutchins to postpone the, uh, plastic, uh, legal, what did you call them?
Those are spring, spring toys.
Spring toys.
We're on table there.
Table, until next meeting?
I second.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Carl. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Okay, motion passed. Thank you. I know this is something that they've been trying to get us to do for a long time and they're just gonna have to wait one more month to get it done, but we want to do this right, so thank you to the village for, for their patience. Okay, uh, next is the, uh, item number eight B. Discuss and approve possible changes to the Holly Township beach hours and dates of operation. Um, madam manager?
Um, it has come to our attention, uh, we have had traditionally, uh, in August, changed our hours from noon to six, uh, from noon to eight, which it is in, uh, June and July. Um, however, uh, even though, uh, Commissioner Wright changed it on our website, there were other websites that did not change the hours. And our poor staff has had incidents where people have come right before six o'clock with food, with everything, had, had to, you know, uh, be turned away or they've had just a few minutes to be in the water before they, uh, were asked to leave. So, um, I, I think this is a problem. Uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Wright has made efforts to try and change, uh, the hours on those other sites and apparently have not been successful at this point because it's still happening. Another problem is the fact that there are many beaches around us that are affected by E. coli. And so that due to, uh, being on And so that due to being on other websites, uh, we are getting a higher increase of people coming in general. So, um, I I am, and and Commissioner Carl had supported this as well. Uh, asking whether we should, um, at this point, increase our hours for the rest of the season, or at least until it starts getting dark, because it is getting darker earlier. Um, and and it could be affected too by the fact that kids are gonna be starting school soon. And maybe people will not be coming to the beach as much, I don't know. But as of right now, uh, this past weekend was very busy. Uh, we had two rentals. And in addition to these other, uh, people coming even from out of the area, uh, coming to our beach. So, um, I guess it's up to the commission what you choose to do.
I'd like to add.
Yes, please.
I think we've had, I think you'll agree, incredibly warm summer. The average temperature last year and leading up for June or July, excuse me, is eighty-one degrees. The average for August is seventy-nine, two points difference. I I looked at today's date, the high was projected to be eighty-three. If we go out to August twenty-second, uh, eighty-one, the average is seventy-nine point seven for the next ten days. I I feel that closing at six o'clock, and when it's still near eighty degrees, is unjust. We serve the public, it's just too early. Um, sunset is eight thirty-nine tonight. At eight o'clock, it's still quite visible. It's, it's actually, um, uh, a a nice time to be out, I think, outdoors. And and if you, it's that hot, I I can think of a no better place to be at the Holly Beach. Uh, so that was why I support. I think six o'clock is too early to shut down. I drove by there today and it's just gates closed and it's beautiful, hot and sunny. And I just feel that we could be serving the public.
I have some comments, but I'll turn first to the commission. Uh, any other comments from the commission?
The main reason why we close at six o'clock in August is due to staffing. Our staffing was high school kids, college kids. We don't have that problem this year. Not as a problem, but we don't have that this year. And that's why we should be open to eight o'clock.
Okay, I have something similar to that, but Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, um, I understand the reasoning for shifting closing time from eight PM to six PM. However, um, in August, as Commissioner Carl had stated, we often have, still have two to three hours of sunlight after six o'clock. Um, at the beginning of August, um, it stays, uh, the sunset time, I believe. It's right after eight o'clock at the end of August, August thirty-first. So, and as Manager Blanchard said, we've had multiple instances of families who are trying to come utilize our beach, but were turned away. Um, I'm sure that's very frustrating for the residents. And it actually, in my opinion, it discourages the use of our beach. Um, because the exact opposite of what we're trying to do. I I I don't see why we shouldn't extend the time from twelve PM to eight PM season, well, season long, as as long as a season. I also had a couple of comments regarding the dates when the beach opens. You know, um, I know the opening schedule is tied to the Holly area public school calendar. But that leaves the first half of June that closed. When we usually have warm summer-like weather, you know, early, early June here in Michigan. And I I just feel like those, that first half of June is the days that we could be serving the public, and we're not. We're we're just not. And I understand staffing issues might come into play. But there's ways around that. There there's, there's things that we can do to mitigate that. So I I I believe that we need to change our, um, dates and hours of operation of the beach.
Okay, so, uh, there's, there's two reasons that I I like to express a concern. One is financial. We did not budget to pay, uh, for, uh, extra hours in August. We only budgeted for X amount of hours. So our budget will go up, because we're gonna increase our hours. Okay, so the cost for us to be open, because we have to have two staff people out there, is going to go up. We did not budget for it this year. That's one. And the second thing is, and and I've had not many, but I've had one or two complaints from some of the residents out there that don't would like some, some quiet time after six PM. For whatever reason that they, that they may have. They have, they have called us, uh, when, uh, I think one day, when we were, we stayed open for a little bit, or they thought we were open. And 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 they were very concerned and expressed their concern, uh, for us being open later. And so, and these are our residents. These are people that live in the area where the park is at. And and they liked the fact that hours were shortened, so that they could have a little bit more of perhaps quiet time or privacy time, whatever. I I don't know. Uh, and even if, uh, if we have other people that are coming in because of the other parks that are coming out, there are people from other cities that are coming to use our parks. And I have no qualms about that, okay, I like that, I'm I'm glad this is what it's for. But, uh, but again, and then also, the last thing is, uh, there are times when they may not be able to use the beach because of of concerns regarding the environment that we may have with the water. And I know, uh, this year, uh, we weren't, we weren't as open as as much as we would like to because of the work that we had up there, we did, we painted and things of that nature, that we were working on there. And I know, uh, so that was a little bit slow. But but more than anything, I am, I have concerns financially that we may be going over if we extend the the additional hours. Now, I would like for us to take a look at this first, and hopefully I am wrong. Because there have been some days when we did have to close the beach. And so maybe that'll kind of offset a little bit. But I would like for us to, to look at that unless the manager has has examined that issue to see how we're doing, uh, budgetarily wise, uh, as it relates to to the dollars for, uh, staffing.
We have not yet.
Okay, as far as that. So I would, yes, sir, Commissioner Hutchins.
I would like to discuss this for next year. Maybe, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day in different hours. And that way, we can look at this this winter and figure out when we got the budget for time for for staffing. Because it's a little late in the season to be changing our hours, times and openings. So we can look at, you know, a lot of places, like up north, Memorial Day to Labor Day. You know, that was, that's their, their season. So we could look at that, we could look at noon to six, noon to eight. And the other thing is, there's an ordinance in the village. Uh, we used to play softball down there at, the village played at Cyclone Park. There's an ordinance in town for noise. It start, you you can't start till like eight o'clock in the morning, and you have to be done by ten o'clock at night. So we still have to watch the ordinance. So we we follow that parameter okay. We, when we ran softball in the Cyclone Park, we s- they gave us permission to lights out at ten thirty, they gave us an extra half hour to shut out, you know, you know.
Well, I agree, I agree, I would love to to do this. There are some issues that I think we need to look at, and particularly as it relates to our funds and our budget and how they relate to the monies that we have. I I concur with, uh, with Commissioner Hutchins. And, uh, we see if we can look at discussing hours of operation in September for the upcoming budget. Is that a motion, Mr. Commissioner Hutchins? Yes, sir, please, right.
It roughly, I I understand the budget. But we can do the numbers, it's about sixty hours at fifteen dollars an hour. It's gonna be between nine hundred and a thousand. That's kind of the impact. If we, if we extended two hours effective tomorrow or two days from now till the end of the month.
So how many staff, just one, one staff?
Noted, no, that's two. I'm sorry, it would be double that, you're right.
Yeah, so that would be, that's just for one.
That's, yeah, maximum two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars, yes. I think that would have a big impact on our budget.
Well, we, we, I think we should look at that in the future and sit down and see, because we have other projects we gotta take care of. And then we can see, once we get our, this fiscal year's projects done, we got a well to look at and different things. Phase two up on the driveway parking area, so it's something to look at in the future.
Yes, I I agree. There there are, there are several things that are out there in the future that that could affect our budget. And I I know Commissioner mentioned some of those. And even staffing is something that we may have to take a look at. So as much as I would love to just saying yes, I would, I just caution us a little bit and and take a closer look in in September.
We've been doing a real good job on maintenance this year.
Yes.
Very good, played a lot of catch-up.
Yes, we've heard nothing but excellent comments from the public regarding the the work that's been done out there. They love the the color that we all selected. Because they love the way that it looks at the sky and even the, even the the lake a little bit some days, so it's a great color. It's more cheerful and all the work that's been going out there, uh, the cleanup that that we've done. Thank you, Commissioner Hutchins, for going out there and luffing the sand. And and of course, thank you to to Commissioner Wright for, um, for the concessions, which we've never had before. Well, I shouldn't say that, that's not true. We just brought it back up again, and I know that's been a plus and people have liked that. So, uh, so that's a good thing. And of course, uh, Commissioner, uh, I know, I have a hard time, I look at the why, and I wanna say Carol, don't ask me why, but Carl. And, uh, and again, he's done some good work as well to help us, uh, make sure that we get the the beach ready and things of that nature. So everybody here has had their hands. And of course, our manager can't thank her enough for the work that she's done. She's gone above and beyond to with our beaches, so thank you, thank you.
Staff.
And staff.
Staff has done an amazing job, I think.
And you know what, I just, I just remember, Commissioner, uh, Carl, um, the signage, that's been a big issue with you. And you've worked together with the, with our manager to make sure, you know, we we get that together. So, and it's still a little bit more work that needs to be done on the signs.
Actually, it went up yesterday.
Oh, yes.
At like, at least that.
That portion is done.
We're still, um, and this is off topic, but, uh, with the person, uh, who was doing the signs, he feels it's going to be cheaper to do uh, an actual order of ten signs to be, uh, sent out uh, than him doing even two signs for us.
Okay.
Double-sided for the phone issue. So, uh, we get to choose ten, they can be unrelated, uh, signs. So we can, um, actually talk about other signage that we might need.
Okay.
But these would be the, um, you know, realtor type, uh, and political signs. Uh, that would be the size of them.
Okay.
So, very good, be doing that in the next week.
Very good. And again, just for the public, I think we all would like to do this, but I think we need to look at the finances a little closer. And then, uh, and then, uh, consider it in Sep- at September as as Commissioner Hutchins has has so motion. Is there a support? I support. Unless you would like to. So anyways, I will support. Usually the chair doesn't have to, but but she can. So I will support Commissioner's motion. Are there any further comments? There are none, I'm just gonna ask for a voice vote.
Ma- Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, what exactly is the motion that we're voting on?
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest about to raise the motion, no, 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 that's okay. So the motion is to, uh, work with the manager to examine, reexamine, uh, this matter in September, this coming September for, uh, budgeting purposes in the coming year, is that correct?
Yes, for, uh, seasonal operation and hourly operation of the beach.
And it would be for the budget, for the upcoming budget, because, I mean, we only have X amount of dollars that we budgeted for for, uh, staff. And, uh, and I, I'm, like I said, I'm hoping that it balances itself, uh, this year. Because we've had a couple of instances where we've had to stay open a little bit longer than what we planned. And and things of that nature, so.
In the process of examining that, it's a good point. We were closed a few days. How do we stand relative to what we allocate?
And that's what we're gonna look to. So, yeah, we will look at this in September, see where we stand on that. Of course, like everything, unfortunately, this, this is my first year. So just based on the experience I've had, uh, this season, uh, we've had to shut down because of maintenance purposes, we've had that instance. And the other times that we've shut down is because of environmental issues that people could not, you know, uh, uh, use the the beach. And so those are, and weather, oh my, it rained so much this year. Too, so, uh, that was the other reason. So, yes, I'm hoping that it balances itself out and 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 will be okay. But as always, I I'm still concerned, I've not had a chance to look at the budget, and neither has the manager. So with all due respect, uh, I'm hoping that this, that this, um, matter will proceed in September. Okay, so that is the motion. One more time, so the motion is to, uh, move this matter for further review in September for, uh, the upcoming budget, which would be the the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. And also to give a status report, actually, we'll probably get that sooner in in a, in a, in a few months. Because we're gonna get these quarterly reports now to see where we stand financially. And and we'll see where where we landed on our overall, uh, staffing. Okay, so that is the, that is the motion. Any questions, any further comment? Nope, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Do you have a second?
Say again.
Do you have a second?
Yes, I, I second, yes, I second. I said, I usually don't, I can, uh, support a motion, but I prefer, but you guys were taking too long. So I decided. Okay, so I'm the support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, I oppose, nay?
Nay.
So it's, uh, three, two, one. Motion passed. Okay, moving on to item, uh, eight C. Discuss possibility of going out for bid to other auditor companies. Madam Manager, do you wanna discuss this, so that we can, uh?
Yeah, um, previously, uh, we did have, um, Melissa and Matt, our auditors, uh, come in and do a, uh, report to us on not only the budget or on the audit, but also, um, they spoke a little bit about the rising cost of the audit uh, that had been charged to Holly Township Parks. And if you go back in your, you'll see, um, the budget and that pink line, um, has to do with the auditing fees that have been charged from twenty-twenty-two, um, up to, uh, this past year. And and you'll see that there's been significant, uh, raises, uh, in the amount that has been charged. Um, in in the past, there was, um, my understanding, uh, a problem one year, uh, where the audit did not go through, uh, within time, is that correct?
Yes, really.
Um, so, uh, you know, we can certainly understand that there was a raise, uh, in the auditing fee for that particular year. But, uh, even for this past year, for what they themselves considered to be a clean, unmodified audit, um, it it, you know, went up significantly. And um, when I looked with Rachel at, you know, the um, amount of time uh, underneath this page where uh, it says that um, if you remember uh, they had reported that they reported to the state that we were two thousand dollars over budget. Um, according to really correct, uh, we might have gone over in one line item. But our budget was well below uh, what had been, you know, proj- projected. Uh, and I included this invoice journal that they had brought to the um, budget uh, meeting uh, with the auditors. And if you notice in like the date section here, um, it's like the middle of the like the page, it's down uh, there. Um, I I remember talking to Rachel about this. And the fact that she said traditionally, they do not reach out to her until very close to even sometimes after the end of the year. And so then she is left with the uh, you know, at a very busy time for her as well to, you know, scramble to meet the, you know, requests of the auditors, our current auditors. So um, if if you look on those date things, you can see there were, there were a couple of things, you know, in Ju- July uh, that they had reached out. But but the majority of the contacts that they had were in like January and uh, February. And and that would have been, you know, probably a time when they already should have been filed by the end of the year, I think. Uh, or or, you know, possibly in that timeframe. So um, because our budget runs, you know, June to July or July to June. So um, I had talked previously to Rachel about whether she felt that we uh, you know, might reach out to other auditors to um, look into that. Uh, and and she agreed uh, that that might be a good thing to do. And an additional um, the fact that right now is her less busy time. And if this would be an easier time for her to deal with this than at the uh, you know, December, at the end of the year. So um, I just thought I would bring this forward if uh, the commissioners felt this was something that would be a benefit to go forward and look for, you know, possible other. And and we can still reach out to uh, Lewis and Nath too, you know, and and ask them if they would like to still participate.
Comments, questions?
Past years, usually the auditors had a sit-down review with the chair and the managers by February. That's what happened over the years. Then they tied all of them, presented. So they've always been after the first in the year, and I don't know for what reason. But you know, a lot of times bills don't come in or whatever else, you know, the end of our fiscal year. It's kind of like when we collect taxes from the county and uh, everything else, we're always waiting for to get things finalized.
Oh, really? Even though our fiscal year ends June thirtieth?
So that was, that was always with this auditor. That's how they worked. Yeah, sometimes we'd hear from them in December. Then they have a meet, a finalized meeting with us for a rough draft for our audit. So I don't know how they do that internally anymore.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that either. So I have a comment, but before I do, I'd like you from the commission first. Um, Commissioners? Anything?
Yeah, um, yeah, I I think it's a good idea to shop around uh, just to make sure that we're getting the best value for a dollar. Um, you know, even if we decide to stay with our current, our you know, for you and other other qualified firms to make sure that we're, you know, making the best use of taxpayer dollars.
So, okay. And I and I concur, I concur. However, here here's, here's my concern, having having to do audits. Uh, for local communities. As as Commissioner Hutchins mentioned, there are times when uh, the accountants have to start preparing the reports for review by the auditor. I don't know if we have enough time to do this. Now, we don't, we don't even have a contract right now with anyone. Is that correct? Or does uh, does this company think that they're still our auditors?
They they do, but they, I think they did leave the door open for us to reach out to other ones. Um, when he was here, he did say that, you know, they would continue, but that they would, you know, based on the cost, because we were questioning why it was so high, that, you know, uh, they would understand that. If I remember right, I think one of the reasons he gave was catching up from COVID. That they had, you know, kept the amount kind of lower during that time period and they were
So um, if we do go out to go solicit, we need to do this very quickly. Uh, because ordinarily, when we, when we work with auditors, we like to have at least three years. So that we know by before the end of the third year, we can go out for bid and be ready. And to have them, you know, do one more year before they move out. Uh, I don't know if this auditor is gonna continue charging us nine thousand now that there is no more COVID, if that price is gonna go down. We could ask. Or we could just go out. Again, my concern is just timing, that's all. Uh, and uh, I think we we have to do this fairly quickly. Because uh, in September, I believe, is when they audits go really big, all the cities start their audits and they, or some of them are almost done with the audits, because the reports has to be submitted to the state before the end of the year. So we're running tight again on time. That's my concern.
And usually most audits want a three-year contract when you start up one. So they know where they stand.
Can I make a suggestion that uh, perhaps the the manager, the accountant and I can can sit down and and meet with the auditors and of course, the vice chair, if he wishes to join us as well. And and meet with the uh, uh, with the auditors, current auditors, to see if they would consider, you know, at least for this next year, uh, reducing their their costs. And uh, and again, because we're gonna be tied to get an auditor. The only, the only issue here and 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 I I think it's doable, only because we don't have a humongous budget. You know, so I don't think that the auditors will have a hard time doing this. I'm surprised it cost as much as it did. But again, knowing the timeframes, when budgets, when audits are done and completed, usually by September, October. In in many cities, of course, I'm talking about big cities, which is some of the places I work, then, yeah, they were all done, ready for submission uh, before the end of December. So and that's, that's the other concern that I have of also with our accountant, you know, her time as well. And uh, is is it, is it doable? Did you get a chance to speak with uh, with Rachel, with our accountant about that? Uh, she have a
Yes, we talked about it last week when we met.
What did she say?
She was open to the idea of going elsewhere, you know, just to see. But on the other hand, I don't think she would necessarily be opposed if you would, you know, want to reach out to our current auditor for this next year. Um, but.
I didn't, I saw the report. Uh, it was, it was okay. Uh, I had some concerns about some of the reports that they made. I thought they were not accurate. It's just personally me. Uh, but uh, Okay, so let me just go ahead and ask to the commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we act immediately in uh, reaching out to other auditors and at least get three meetings, three bids. I have the feeling that the attitude of the current auditor, the statements they made about the increase, the substantial increase as related to COVID, just didn't connect with me. And I wasn't aware of um, the fact that they're, say, if you want to reach out to people who have attic, you know, it's just, it seems like now attitude. And I I would say, let's work diligently to move. Look for another company.
All right.
I highly doubt a meeting was, is gonna garner a reduction in price. Who does that? I mean.
Because during the meeting that presented the audit, uh, they did mention that um, their prices were gonna go up. Uh, they're they're
They weren't looking to
They were not looking to reduce prices. So if anything, the prices can go up.
And who knows? We may get just the same prices for the others, you know? I don't know. I find that hard to believe for the amount of budget that we have. But uh, you never know, you never know.
Yeah, I'll I'll second.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
If you look at the overall scheme of things, we're in a special class of small potatoes. As you clung out from the fireworks. That's why we had fireworks on July third, because we're small. This is why, you know, why they're spending this little bit of time. They could be spending time on a bigger.
Understood.
And then, yeah.
Understood. Okay, so there is a motion on the table to go out and seek out uh, a new, new firms to bid, and we will ask our current auditor to also submit a bid. Uh, is there a support?
Support.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? I'm gonna go ahead and just do a roll call vote. Okay.
DeSessa.
Yes.
Hutchins.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Right. Yes.
Very good. That's what to do quickly. Yeah, I agree. I agree with you, Commissioner. It's uh, it's, okay. All right. So next is item number eight D. Discuss Oakland County Health Water Treatment Letters and approve up to three thousand void pairs to Sorson Park uh, Nature Center well. Madam Manager.
So um, we have been for the last year, uh, or eleven months anyway. Uh, been having our water tested on a monthly basis due to the fact that last year, we did have um, bacteria in the water. And um, at that point, uh, they had had um, the wa- the wells uh, chlorinated. And um, all of our samples came back uh, clear until the very last sample, uh, which would have been to the point where we didn't have to have a monthly sample again. And so now we are back to the position of uh, having to go through the process of possibly chlorinating. Um, but uh, when they did find that we had coliform in our well, um, they even sent out a second person from Oakland County Health Department. And uh, Commissioner Hutchins was here at the time that she and Katie Odell, who is our usual uh, sample person. Um, they came out, they did an assessment of our four different uh, sample taps uh, that we use. They all thought that they were in excellent uh, locations, that there was nothing that would uh, likely interfere with the fact uh, that would introduce bacteria to their samples. So they both felt that the well was likely the cause of that bacteria. And um, so uh, they did ask that, or actually, they didn't ask. Uh, they suggested that we get a well driller to come out and to have the well chlorinated. Um, we actually uh, took it a step further and thought that we should have the well actually assessed uh, to see if there is possibly a reason that this bacteria kept coming back. Um, I I did reach out to a well driller. I had a little issue with um, him contacting us back. Uh, he did come out. Um, he said that our mechanical things um, in the attic, the heating tank and that that all of those uh, things are in excellent condition as far as he can tell. Um, he said, uh, he offered to chlorinate it, but we had talked to um, the people from Oakland County. And he said that if you chlorinate too often, you could be in a situation where you're getting corrosion and that. And um, Commissioner Hutchins had said, as far as he knew, that our well had never been worked on. Is that correct?
Yes, as far as I know, we've never pulled that well.
Yeah.
There's a submersible pump, the motor, there's a pump and a screen. It's never been pulled and serviced or cleaned, as far as I know.
Okay. So um, when the well driller did come out, uh, we talked about the fact that he is going to be on vacation this week. Um, and that when he gets back, that he would come out and uh, pull the well. And um, he suggested that if there were things that needed to be addressed with the well itself, he would think that there would be a maximum amount of three thousand dollars uh, to uh, replace parts. Uh, because as far as we know, they've never been replaced. Now, just today, um, I did talk to um, Katie Odell, our usual um, sample person. She actually thinks that um, it is not uh, usual that you have to pull a well to do this type of testing and that. Um, she's very comfortable with just us going through the chlorination process again. And you know, she said the other thing is, is that in our area, that they have very similar problems with local churches. Um, because of the fact that, you know, in the winter and that, that you have more activity, you have more uh, programs and that going on. And in the summer months, all of that goes outside generally. You don't have as much usage of the buildings. And you know, here at the Nature Center, because of the fact that we have not had uh, much programming, we've been concentrating more on the infrastructure issues that we've had. Um, we really have not had much usage of this building. And so when Oakland County Health came out, one of the things that they suggested even was taking our outside tap and hooking a hose to it and just letting it run for a couple of hours, a a few times a week just so that we can, you know, have that water moving through the system. Um, so they felt that that would be helpful as well. Um, so uh, I guess at this point, I'm I'm wondering about the commission, how you feel that we should proceed? Whether we should go ahead and authorize the three thousand dollars if it's needed. It may not be needed. When they pull the pump, it may be in good condition. I don't know. Uh, or if we just want to go and do as had previously been done and just do the chlorination, do the testing, the repeat testing and see whether it would um, come out clear. Uh, we have to do at least two tests once the chlorination has been done to make sure that it's clear. And then we would still be on that monthly um, assessment or the monitoring uh, because of the fact that we um, failed with the bacteria again. So that's where we're at.
Questions, comment?
I have one. And it's a group of bacteria found in the environment and in the intestines of warm-blooded animals, including human. Which I wonder if pulling the pump is gonna rid that bacteria? Um, or do we know what might be the cause of the bacteria at at the at the point or the bottom of the well? Joe, do you, is there an animal? Could there be an animal that get down there and and decay?
No, not really. But you gotta remember, we're in a glacial plain. And there was a lot of, due to the glacier and stuff, we have a lot of things that's in our wells. Uh, vegetation, animals that died, everything else. We could, it doesn't cost us nothing to run a hose and and run the pump, just electricity, see if that can That casing is so big, it's five, probably five-inch casing. And let's say there's forty feet of water in there. Well, if you don't refresh in that water all the time, you move it out, it has a chance for bacteria to grow everywhere. So we can run a hose and start sprinkling it out here. And uh, see what it does. It also costs us as a And, uh, see what it does, it also costs us electricity. Uh, but I say, then if it doesn't, pull it. Because this, this place was built for commercial use. That could be a two or three horse pump down there, which we're never gonna use. We don't cut that pump back to one horse or three quarter horse, prove how much water we use here. So that I would try flushing the well by irrigating, you know, around here. And see if that works. If it doesn't, pull it because. I worked at Lard and Plastics up on Dixie Highway, East Hollywood. And, uh, we had two wells there that were deep, they were commercial wells. And we'd, uh, we had a front well and a back well. Every six months, we'd pull that pump out because we had sulfur. And clean the screens, make sure it was serviced, put it back down. A lot of these were hard piped, so when the guy wells are really cold. He said, just lay it out on the, out on the parking lot, we'll take care of it. So we put flexible viewing pipe on it. Put the safety cable back on it, and two guys could pull the pump and scream, pump and motor by themselves with two guys. So we don't have to pay for a well refound. So, yeah, so every six months, by clockwork, bang. We shut down one well, pull it, clean it, put it down, fire up the other well. So I would look at, let's irrigate it, it doesn't cause us nothing but electric bill. And, uh, we got holes around here, put a sprinkler out there, let it go and see what goes. If it still keeps showing bacteria. Then the, the well will be the source. Cause we don't use much water. We used to have these super duper toilets in here. When we went to rebuild them, it just cost an arm and a leg to force flush toilets. That we really need them, because if you didn't flush them five times a day, they'd water log, they had problems with the toilet. So we pulled them, so result, and put in regular residential toilets.
So can I confirm though? I believe that Oakland County. Either needs us to. Do the chlorine or, uh, have the well driller, uh, do the. Pull the pump. Um, so do you want to try the chlorination first?
Yes, I would go there.
Okay.
I go there, let's get that another try, then we'll just run, run it, run it, run it, run it.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wright?
Um, I mean, I understand that we're required by Oakland County to, to take action. Uh, and I'm, I, I don't, I don't want to hold up the, the fixing problem. Like, my problem is, uh, like. Has been said, we don't know the source of the issue. And it, it doesn't make much sense to. Um, keep going and fix something that might not need to be fixed. Um, I, I think, uh, Commissioner Hutchins' idea is, I don't know, valid. I think it's where we should start. Um, do we know how much the chlorination process will cost?
Madam Manager.
I don't know how much it would cost. Um, I don't know how much they charged last year. Uh, but I do believe it would be significantly less than three thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of quoted for the pump.
It'd be a couple hundred bucks. I gave it up back through our bills. It, uh.
Yeah.
Layman charges, because Mr. Layman, Senior Layman came out and charged our well last time.
So if, if the, if the cost was significantly less, like Commissioner Hutchins said, a couple, I don't know, a few hundred dollars. I, I believe that would put it well within the range of the petty cash fund that you already authorized to spend. So I'm not quite sure that we need to, uh.
Not three hundred petty cash.
I believe the purchasing, uh, policy states three hundred dollars, yes.
Wow, okay.
What's your limitation on purchase?
Well, our, our amount for petty cash is three hundred dollars. I mean, that's how much we, that's keep in the petty cash on a regular basis.
See, we used to authorize the manager, we limit her, them to spending five hundred dollars while having to come in for permission. You know, we kept our petty cash separate.
Oh. With all due respect, I think this is separate from petty cash. This is, uh, not a petty cash item.
No.
Uh, this is more of a maintenance expense.
Yeah.
And so I respectfully ask that it not be considered a petty cash item. Uh.
I would like to make a motion at this time.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the manager to spend up to, up to and not more than five hundred dollars on chlorinating the well. That way it should take care of any other question of that.
Now, they want us to do it twice, is that correct?
No.
No, chlorination once, we'll test two or three times.
Chlorination is once, and then it has to sit in the well for twenty-four hours. And then you flush it, and after that point, then you sample two different times.
Yeah.
Is my understanding.
You do what? What was your last comment?
It's my understanding you have to sample twice. You have to get two clear samples.
Yeah, chlorination wants two testings from the health department.
Right.
Yep, standard procedure.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize the manager to spend up to five hundred dollars to fornate. The, the well, well?
Um, can, I'm sorry, can I actually add though, I am not chlorinating the well, a well driller has to.
That's correct. I stand corrected. To hire a, work with our well.
What do you charge a chlorinator?
What, what is, what's wrong with you?
Yeah, that was not me.
Go on and do that. Uh, I stand corrected. Thank you, ma'am, Madam Manager. So, uh, so the motion would be to authorize the manager to. Work with a contractor to chlorinate our, our well at a cost, uh, not to exceed five hundred dollars. And, uh, and to irrigate, um. Our, what is it, our, our water?
Yeah.
Uh, a hose for a few hours.
We'll flush it.
Flush, to flush out, okay, to flush, flush out the waters. Or as needed, as she, as she sees fit. Is there a support?
Support.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Carl, because this is a finance, I'll ask, uh, our vice chair to do a roll call.
Carl.
Yes.
Hutchins.
Yes.
De Sessa.
Yes.
Right, yes.
Motion pass.
Point of order, Madam Chair, um, since we didn't. What, what, uh, becomes of item D then? Because that, that's a totally separate motion. And.
Well, we.
Can we just, do we just strike that from the agenda or?
Well, actually, not. No, uh, we've, we've changed, we've changed the three thousand to five hundred.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I mean, it just, it doesn't have to stay correct exactly. If we wanted to say exactly, and I see your point of. We have to go back and rechange the motion, but the motion would be to approve up to five hundred dollars and, uh, to repair. Uh, or to, uh, chlorinate.
Right.
The, uh, Sorson Nature Park Center well.
Yeah, I, I understand what the motion that we just voted on. I just wanted to know procedurally what happens to item D. Because we have to do something with that.
Right, well, that's, we, we. We did, we just said it in a different fashion.
Sure did.
We sure said it in a different fashion. But, uh, but if you'd like, uh. We can, we can just quickly ask the, the maker of the motion, if he, if he wouldn't mind going back to that. Is that okay?
We didn't take action on that, we amended that, so it's taken care of.
Okay, it's taken care of. All right, everybody okay with? Thank you.
Can I, um, clarify one thing though? So if, um, the well driller comes out to chlorinate. And it exceeds the five hundred dollars. What would be the process then? Um, should I go, possibly go to Rachel and ask her how much was spent then? Even though the price may have risen from that point too. Um, or when the well driller contacts me. And I share with him that we have decided to chlorinate first and just get the approval. Or, you know, find out what his fee is. And then, you know, if it exceeds five hundred, to contact the commission.
Well. We have to meet again.
I definitely would not mention the, uh, no.
Say it again.
I, I, I wouldn't mention the five hundred dollar max.
Oh, yes, to, to the.
See, to the contractor, however, it's a public meeting, so, you know, it's on the record.
Well, I wouldn't mention it to him, but I'm just wondering.
Right.
The process, if it exceeds five hundred dollars.
It would have to come back to us.
Yes.
Or let's say it's five hundred and it's five hundred fifty dollars, can we take fifty dollars out of, out of petty cash and up?
Yeah, that's not how it works.
All right, take so.
No, so, uh, what we can do is, uh, the manager can take a, a straw hole. To see if we're okay with the increase, and then we'd have to come back at the next meeting and formally approve. Because it would, I guess it would be considered an emergency repair. And so at this point, you know, you have to correct this. This is something we must do because otherwise we'd be in violation with, with the county. So.
We'll go back and do, so if we're worried about the total cost, let's go back and reamend that, make it a thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, let's, let's do that.
It's supposed to five hundred. Makes sense.
Okay, so with the maker of the motion, uh. Men that a number of five hundred to a thousand?
Yes, that would be my motion is to amend, reamend that from five hundred to a thousand dollars.
And with the, and with the supporter, what is that?
Squirrel.
Oh.
We do see some wild, like, we, we are at the Nature Center.
I'm thinking of, I didn't have horns.
Okay, so the motion, this motion has been amended, change number, uh, five hundred to a thousand. Uh, and, and continue to support by Commissioner Carl.
Yep.
Uh, roll call please.
Carl.
Yes.
De Sessa.
Yes.
Hutchins.
Yes.
Right, yes.
Good. I forget yesterday's prices are tomorrow's prices.
They're not, that's a good point. Okay, moving right along to item number, uh, eight E. Uh, discuss and approve the paint project for the pavilion at the Baseball Diamonds at Sorson Park. Manager?
So after we had had all of the other infrastructure painted, both at the beach and here at the Nature Center. Um. We were having at the same time our road project done. And Chairperson De Sessa and I had to park up at the top of the ball fields, uh, and walk down the trail. And as we were parking there, we looked across at the pavilion, which is unpainted, and. We were like, wow, maybe this needs some love too. So, uh. I asked the, um, salesperson who had been working with us, uh, on the previous, uh, projects. If he would mind stopping because he, he lives, uh, nearby, uh, to give us an estimate on. The pavilion here at Sorson by the ball fields. Um, and the one thing he did tell me was that he would not, uh, or he would recommend that he did not. Use the same type of paint. Um, he would recommend that we use what is called a solid stain. He said it has the same look as paint, but because particularly inside, up on the ceiling. It is raw wood and has never been treated, that he felt that the solid stain was the better product to use. So, um, that is where we are, but, um. Uh, Chairperson or Commissioner Carl, uh, did contact me and say that he felt that if we were going to do that, that we. Did need to have three bids, and that is correct. Um, the only reason that I, uh, contacted this person was. Because we had just gone through that whole process with the many live nearby. Um, but I don't believe that we ever did, uh, consider that on an agenda previously. About including the pavilion at the ball fields. So that's why I thought it required to be under new business. So that's why we went that route.
Sure.
Um, if, I guess if the commission feels that that is a worthy, uh, thing to proceed with. We could, um, check even with the previous people who had come and, uh, given bids for the original project. Or we could put it out as just a general, uh.
We could put it in next year's budget for consider it for approval. I mean, our time, time for doing something like this is getting shorter and shorter.
Yeah, also getting three bids then. He is correct about stain. I didn't, my house has only been. I started in nineteen eighty. I stained that instead of paint. And I've only done it twice in all them years. Stain breathes better. It was raw wood, it was, uh. Uh, cedar siding. So, uh, he is right about stain, and I'm gonna repaint it again, I'm gonna stain it. It's easier to spray and, um, even though I, I've coated it before, it's easy to repaint. Re, recoat, so stain is good for raw wood, he's correct on that. And I would say like, with other things we got plans is, I'd have it this for next year, three bids and see what's going on.
Okay, yeah, because we have a lot of projects that we still have to do this year. What is the, uh, what is the, uh, recommendation of, of this commission? What would you like to do? Just hold off, uh, postpone this until next year? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to, I guess it would be table this, uh, uh, this particular item until next year's budget.
Is there a support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I'll ask Commissioner, right, if we did that, how's that fall in conflict with Little League? Cause we, the billion probably doesn't get used for that or?
No, no, the only, the only things that we use a pavilion for, for Little League would be for concessions.
Okay.
And we, we can, we can adjust.
So you're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion has been, uh, moved by Commissioner Wright and supported by Commissioner Hutchins. Hutchins to, uh, table this item for consideration in next year's budget. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass. Okay, moving right along to item number. Eight, uh, discuss and approve grant application to Oakland County CISM for. Sorson Park. Uh, so commissioners, again, this is, uh, anytime, uh. We decide to look at a grant, it, it needs our approval before the manager can, can submit it. So that's why it is here for you. So with that, I'll turn it over to the managers to get explained what we're doing.
Well, I do apologize because I don't actually have, uh, grant to show you. Um, I have spoken to Patrick Kenepp, he is the head of CISM. Uh, which is the Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area, part of Oakland County Parks. Uh, we have been greatly helped by them and, uh. Patrick has also expressed that he appreciates the fact that we are willing, uh, to have them come out. And, and actually do work in our park, uh, to try and preserve some of the really special things in, involved in our park. Um, but when we were discussing the grant application. Um, there were some specific things that had been discussed in a previous tour that we had done. Uh, one of those things was, uh, trying to create a barrier of some sort in front of some of the. Oak trees that are near the back of the park, that are more susceptible to oak wilt if, uh, beetles. Get into possible wounds from, uh, disc strikes of the disc golf course. So, uh, it, it had been suggested that possibly we could. Try and build some type of barrier that in those more, uh, susceptible trees. Based on the direction of the holes, uh, that they're more at risk. Because they're right in the middle of the fairways or whatever they call them. Um, so that was one, uh, aspect. Another thing that had been brought up is that there are some areas of erosion where, um. So say, uh, there's a, there's a statement that if a plant gets stepped on up to seven times. That you're basically killing that plant, uh, and, and part. Uh, and, and part of that is when discs go off of the course. Uh, that, you know, obviously the disc golfers would walk over to pick up their discs and that and it's. Possible that they are, you know, uh, stepping on the same plants over and over. Uh, so there are definitely some areas of holes uh, on the disc golf course. Where they're getting, they called it cheating of water off of the disc golf course. Particularly in the areas where uh, there is a slope uh, to the terrain. So um, they suggested that doing some type of native plantings. Um, of either uh, flowers or shrubs uh, that would be beneficial. But also could help to hold the soil uh, and uh. And in our case, you know, uh, because we have um, some very valuable remnant uh, prairie. Uh, to use uh, some of those particular plants in that area would be beneficial. Um, the other thing I had asked about was in our bee yard, uh, because we did have the um. Machine that came out and did the woody invasive removal here in the bee yard. Uh, we did um, have significant uh, bittersweet that has come back. Uh, in that area and I had asked him the possibility um, of using an herbicide. In that area, but only in the winter. Uh, that by um, spring, when the bees would come back to the nature center. That that could actually have already dissipated in the soil. And he agreed that it would be likely that if they were to apply the herbicide. Um, after the bees were removed in the fall, that they could apply an herbicide. And by spring next year, that those uh, plants coming up uh, would not contain herbicide. Uh, obviously, we're gonna have to talk to um, the Northwest Oakland Bee Association about that, how they would feel about it. But I actually think that if it's possible, um, that might be a, a good solution for there for right now. Um, the other thing is, is that in the fall, uh, that um, roots pull down. Uh, the herbicide into the plant, but in the summer, if you were to apply it. He called it the sugar in the plant is rising and so that it's less likely that it would kill the plant. It would um, possibly kill the top section, but the base of the plant could still be living. Uh, so he suggested that in the fall, uh, is um, best like August, September. Uh, to actually do that herbicide work, pull it down. I don't know exactly when the bees are gonna be removed, so that might not be possible um, in August. Uh, possibly in September, uh, that might be possible. We'll have to check with um, Donna Bouchelle on that. Um, another area is um, previously they had done um, uh, herbicide treatment. On woody invasive uh, plants that were coming back up. Um, that they had treated last year. And he said that he felt that in this section and in the back. Uh, one of the ways that they could do is what they call a cut stump treatment. Where the woody invasives that have come back up, you cut um, when it's still up a ways. And then you just dab with um, the herbicide directly on the stump. And so it's actually a more beneficial way to treat uh, those type things instead of a foliar spray that goes in more location. Uh, it is a more concentrated um, type of treatment and it's only in that one uh, s- spot. And so um, he, he did recommend that he thought, excuse me, that that would be um, a good use of. Our funding to, to do some of that and even along the back um, trails. Uh, that he felt that that would be a good um, possibility. He fully supported us. Um, because I told him that um, coming right up, uh, we are going to be having on August twenty third. Um, a four H group is gonna be coming and helping to do some pulling of the bittersweet in this area. And he recommended even um, taking and cutting just at like a two to three foot area. Or two to three foot height, um, because it makes it easier to come back in the fall. And actually be able to treat that area, um, whereas we wouldn't want to do it right this minute. Um, so um, one of the things with bittersweet uh, that makes it uh, a problem. Is that in the later fall, you do have the seeds that actually form and they fall. And create new plants right off. So um, not only are you getting the root uh, spread of the bittersweet. But also the um, fresh uh, berries that create more of a problem. Um, so uh, he would um, definitely approve of us including in the grant. To put in an assessment of the oak stand for oak wilt. And he said that they can do this by um, actually taking some uh, core samples. And sending them off for uh, analysis. And he said another thing that we could do is to be looking at the actual bark of the oak trees. And looking for what he called a fungal pad, which is a growth that's underneath the bark and it pushes the bark out. And he said that is also an indication that those trees could be under risk of oak wilt. Uh, another thing to look for is that um, at the top of the tree and at the longest branches of the tree. Um, that the leaves turn dry and fall off uh, sooner than other parts of the tree. So um, we can, I'll, I'll be addressing that with um, Mel uh, about watching for those things when he's out on the course. Uh, and, and he did approve um, us including the tree protect protections. Uh, with that and that he felt that um. Doing even uh, if a possible workshop could be held with even the disc golf players. Uh, and doing those uh, builds for whatever protection we come up with. But he did say that he uh, felt that Cisma um, would probably like to be involved. In the actual design of the protection and that. So um, that would be part of the money. That would be included in the grant. And when I was asking him about a suggestion of an actual amount. He said that for some of the things that we had discussed that he felt was most important. Such as the assessment of the oak stand um, and the tree protection. He would felt, he felt that, you know, possibly in the uh, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollar range would be good. However, uh, he said that the grant opportunities are up to ten thousand to twelve thousand dollars. So we, you know, we are not necessarily limited to just these, you know, we, we can. Uh, create a grant that includes more options than just, you know, these assessments and the protections. So um. So I guess that is what I would um, say and uh, one other addition, he did tell me that. Uh, Oakland County, just like most places, they are doing evaluations of all their different branches. Of government and that Cisma is also going under an evaluation process through Oakland County. And um, so the one thing that he felt would be beneficial would be for Holly Township Parks. To reach out to our Oakland County Commissioner Bob Hoffman and speak in support of Cisma. And the fact that they have been so helpful to us uh, at Holly Township Parks. And I do have um, Commissioner Hoffman's phone number for any of the commissioners that they would like to do their own outreach on that. But I would definitely um, you know, certainly reach out to Bob Hoffman myself.
So, okay, very good. Uh, Commissioner Hutchins?
I would like Bob Hoffman to get in touch with uh, Patrick and give, give him an overview. Of what's going on here and what they're all about because uh, he's our area commissioner. And also, he also covers the village. It's worth going to Cisma Ranch there. And I think since he's numero uno, he should have a meeting with. Somebody like the chair and our manager and Patrick or his crew. Give him an overview and teach him all what it's about and how they've helped us out here and what we got to detect.
So you're suggesting that we try and set up a tour here at Sorensen with. Okay, I, I will say that at this point, uh, Patrick did share that they are uh, frozen. Basically, as far as them being able to provide tours. So they are not able to do a tour. Um, I can contact him and say whether we could facilitate a meeting.
Yeah, at least a meeting.
At least a meeting is what I would recommend.
Give them all the points of view. Our point of view, Cisma's point of view, Hobbit.
Maybe we can even include the village.
Yeah. I know Bob well enough that I think he'd be very interested in the oak stand back there because it's very rare. It's a key to Holly.
Yes.
Come see it.
Yes, very much so. Okay. I have some comments, but first, commission, any other remarks, Commissioner Wright? Okay, so I. I like, I liked the, the, yeah, the um. Projects you recommended there. The only one that I'm not. Although I am, I am a big supporter of protecting our trees and I know that's important. But I really think that our disc golf people, because they're the ones that are, with all due respect, causing this, that. They should be addressing this matter. And uh, and, and uh, because, because of their discs that they're throwing them and they're hitting the trees and that's what's causing the damage. So I think, again, it's just me. I know you all have different opinions, but I think that's something that they should address. Now, we don't, we have to sit down with them and now I respectfully request that you schedule a meeting. So that uh, you and I can meet with them and come up with a contract. We don't have one and we need one. And I think that the protection of our trees is something that they should address. Because they're the ones, again, with all due respect, that is causing this. Now, we can apply for these grants. We may or may not get them. I don't, uh, my question to you is, is there a match to this?
There is no match.
No match, perfect.
Great.
So um, you know, we may be able to get, you know, five, ten thousand and put this all under all three. And I'm not saying let's wait for, for this golf to do this. We should do it anyways, okay? Because I know how important and we are all a bunch of tree lovers here. We want to protect our, our beautiful, beautiful uh, forest. But at the same time, I really think that the, that the disc golf people need to be aware of that. And uh, and, and they need to perhaps take some steps. And I mean, they're here, we understand. They're right smack in the middle of a, of, of a forest, but that's important. And I think, I think uh, this is something that, with the permission of, of the commission, that I, I will mention to them and say. We're looking at this. It's been brought to our attention that, you know, you may be damaging our trees, that your, your discs. You may need to take a look at some of the areas where there is mega damage and putting, placing some type of barrier there.
Okay, can I address that to a certain extent?
Yeah.
I, I have met with some of the disc golf people and some of the disc golf people attended the tour that we had.
Yes, I know.
With um, Keegan, uh, Schal- Schilburn, I believe, from Cisma. Uh, with Sue Julian with Headwaters Trails.
Hmm.
Um, and uh, North Oakland Headwaters, uh, Land Conservancy, Blue Heron Conservancy now. Um. I honestly think that the disc golf people want to work with the commission and parks. There's no question that they want to be cooperative with helping. Um, as Patrick said though, Cisma would actually like to be involved in the design of it.
And that would be part of.
And, and I think that, you know, my understanding from the disc golf people is they want to help.
Okay.
You know, they want to help. I mean, if you, if you were to hold a workday, I think that they would be right up front. And be the force that is.
I guess, I guess if we, if, I don't know how these applications are, are done, if they're done individually or all together as one or whatever. I think they would be done individually because you want to make sure that, you know, they're all considered, but um. But if, if, if they don't approve, say, the, the tree protection, and we could, we should address this with, with the. With the uh, disc golf people and I, again, I, I'm only my, speaking for myself, but I'm sure the commission would want them to work with Cisma. Uh, uh, to make sure that they're, that they're developing whatever it is, you know, in accordance to their rules and not, not something that I would just come up.
Well, again, I think, you know, because I had spoken to them, they were more than willing to go on a tour. And it, and it's actually been as much Cisma and us that's been, you know. Because Cisma is held up by being able to do tours right now, but even us with. Working on the beach so much this summer and the fact that with the heat and the bugs, this has not been an easy time. To be out on the course um, to do a tour. So I, I really. I'm not gonna say I feel strongly, but I, I think that to, to indicate that the disc golfers are not willing. To do that is really a stretch because they are.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that they're not willing. I'm just saying that in the event we don't get a grant from Cisma to protect the trees. Then we should speak with, with the uh, disc golf folks and say, we need to do something here. We're gonna continue this. And we could perhaps maybe sharing the cost. I don't know. There are trees, but definitely, you know, uh. I don't think we'll get all three projects or whatever. We may get one or two, uh, because there's so many cities that are be, that will be applying for these grants.
I, I think um, they are written all as one. My, my indicate, I, I think they all go in as. Uh, our application to Cisma would include the multiple steps that we want them to do.
But what if they don't like one of them?
Pardon?
If they don't like one of the items that are on there, would they remove it or?
Well, I think they would adjust it. I, I think, you know.
Can you check with them before we do this? Cause I don't, I hate for us to, you know, lose that.
Yes.
Danny's a good person to work with, with DPW. You shoot for the sun, you send off the moon. So you go for the top dollar. And the other thing is with the disco, their contract will be, we can write in there is the con- is, is the condition of the contract. Is protection of our natural resources.
Well, the other thing that I think is important to point out though, is that of the disc golf. People who use this course, there's only a certain number of them that are involved in the groups that are. Actually working with us. There are many disc golfers who come here, who are not involved with those groups.
There's, we, I know this is for another topic, another time and topic, because otherwise we're gonna be here forever. But definitely, we, this commission needs to address this item because we're having other, other individuals, other. Organizations using and not paying and not following any rules that we may or may not have. So I think we need to, we need to address that in some fashion and try to control it if we can. It's very difficult. And we don't have park rangers that'll go up there and say, can we see your permit? You know, do you, did, did you buy a ticket? You know, that sort of thing. We don't charge. We don't have staff that says, okay, you know. It's three dollars for you to go play the course. We don't, we don't do that. And I don't think we, we don't want to do that, but at the same time.
On the other hand, there are other parks.
Other parks. Yes.
So.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so that's another topic of discussion, but let's do that. I think we're all in favor, at, at least just listening to everyone here. That we would like to uh, uh, submit a, a grant application. Based on those items that you discussed, ma- manager and uh, and then we can see, we'll see what happens.
Um, so. My understanding is the grant has to be submitted by August thirty first. So um, is there a way that we could have a motion for that to approve? Up to a certain amount and then in the future I could send you a copy of the grant. Uh, as information.
Well, with, I don't want to limit you, okay? I don't want to limit you. I mean, they're, they're, they're gonna say to us. You know, like, like Joe said, the sky's the limit. I don't want to, I would respectfully say just. What, whatever, whatever amount you think is gonna cost for us to do these grants. We're gonna, I, I, that's what I would. what whatever whatever amount you think is going to cost for us to do these grants, we're gonna, I I, that's what I would say. What what I would like to do is to get somebody to help you in the preparation of these grants. And I'm looking at him because he's such a great writer. If he wouldn't mind helping with this project. Yes, sir.
One comment on that, that's what Danny, he's doing the grant for the village.
But Dan had a lot of help.
Said, you go for a big tour, picture, ask for everything you can, and if they have to pair, now you end up with something that works. So you pull this big and we end up with that, whatever it takes.
Well, I will say too that in the previous grant proposal for the winter mowing, um, they actually were able to provide us with additional services afterwards because they found that there were some projects that didn't come in uh overall, not just here at Holly Township Parks uh that didn't cost, you know, possibly what they were charged or that. And so, uh, you know, gratefully, they they were able to use that for other services for us here at this park.
That's where we got the extra two, three days of chopping out. You know what you're charged with.
Good point, good point.
In kind of service, they said, well, she wants it.
Do that.
Everything you don't like, have it, and then they gave back a chop on the ground again. So we got, thank you very much, Sisma.
Though that was still part of the winter mowing, though.
Yeah, that was part of the winter.
This was actually after the winter mowing was all done and closer to the end of their fiscal year, I think they found some additional funds and came out and did other work.
Yeah.
And so we were really grateful to them for that.
And I think when you tell Sisma about Holly Township Parks, I think we're on their A list. Because we gave them a chance out here, we told them, you can come out here, show everybody else in Michigan or Oakland County what's going on, help yourself, you know what's going on. So we're we're showcasing now. Yep.
So Madam Manager, I think the motion perhaps that would help you. At least I'm hoping it does unless someone else comes up with something better. And it's just to uh approve a motion to grant, approve the motion is the manager to submit the grant application to Oakland County FSMA uh amount to be to be determined or whatever, uh, just based on whatever you you come up with. I don't want to say whatever you come up with, but just to be determined by by the manager.
And the sunset on that.
And the sunset, and this must be submitted by August the thirty first, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is not part of the motion of but again, I've seen his writing capabilities, he's excellent. I I would ask, uh, if 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 Commissioner Wright has any any time, maybe the three of us could sit down, you know, we're we're a good group, we can come up with some quick responses and 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 prepare. And so we could help help uh help the manager to quickly come up with something.
Do what I can to help.
Thank you. You're an excellent writer. I've seen your work. Excellent, just outstanding. Okay, all right, so that is the motion. Is there, is there someone who wishes to make that motion?
Support or I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hutches to approve the grant application for Oakland County FSMA for Sorensen Park and to be submitted uh by August thirty first, twenty twenty five, so we authorize the manager. Okay, so should we do that? Okay. So that was a motion by Commissioner Hutches, is there a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passed. Thank you. This is, um, I'm hoping that we were able to get some, it is, it's going to be a very competitive um, application because I worked with the village to set their stuff up. We had a lot of people come together to do their application. And and it keeps revolving and changing because I know the village is doing this gigantic ask as you're as Commissioner Hutches mentioned. So okay, so moving right along to item number nine, reports. Let's start with staff reports, Madam Manager.
All right. So the one thing that just recently we did work with Kathleen at Tri-County Times for our ad regarding the schedule and also included some additional information, I'll pass that around. Uh, if you have not seen it, the actual Holly Township Parks will be participating in the holidays uh coming up on Saturday, September sixth and seventh. Uh, undetermined yet what actual activity we're going to do, but we will be there. And if anybody has any ideas or would like to participate, we would welcome you. Um, the other thing, uh, just recently on this past Thursday, um, we did have our outside turtle habitat built. We had five children who actually came and helped us to uh build our habitat and I'd like to thank Commissioner Hutches for coming out. Um, also Mel, our maintenance supervisor and Zach uh were here. Uh, my husband came to help. Um, Quinn, uh, our staff person at the beach, she was here with her sons. And a woman who had previously come and just visited the Nature Center with her grandchildren, uh, Emmeline and Henry, Ashley Dean, she came out and actually um visited and they had a great time. And I can honestly say that I think our turtles are benefiting uh by being out in the habitat. Um, I think it turned out uh the way that I was kind of anticipating that my son had drawn up. And um, I I think hopefully it's going to last for a good long time. And um, that and, you know, the biggest reason that we undertook that was because we had had uh some vet expenses because of skin infections and that that they've had uh and some concerns about their shells. And the vet did say that he thought the very best thing for them would to be to get them out in natural sunlight and absorb the UV rays. And so that is one of the things and uh the other thing that he said is that uh because they, you know, live in these inside tanks, he said the outside stimulation of just being in the grass and looking for bugs and other things uh would just be a a real benefit to them. So they are doing that. I will be following up with an actual report. Uh, previously, the um commission had asked that I check with the staff and their thoughts uh regarding um the July third uh event and the course. Um, so I will be uh writing up an actual report on that. Uh, I did also ask them to um you know, share any thoughts of concern, satisfaction, things that they would like to see improved. And so I will be following up with that as well. Um, but I I do think that uh they have been really cooperative as far as trying to improve the beach. In addition to just greening the gut, uh, you know, even when they did the most recent uh thing where they were doing the tables, painting the tables. Um, I I know Tom had said, you know, there was a lot of time and effort put into, you know, not only scraping them, but then sanding them. Uh, the staff jumped in to help with the actual painting. I know Debbie and Alexis were actually uh helping with that as well. Um, and this past weekend, we had two rentals that came up. And uh, one of the rentals, not only, uh, they they are a repeat uh person who've been there previously. And uh, she had her um fifty dollar deposit that we were going to return to her because they left it in very good shape. Uh, while they were there, I had told them that, you know, due to the commission voting that uh the next year's cost would be a hundred dollars and that they would get the fifty dollars returned if they leave it clean. They took up a a collection on the spot and they came up with, you know, not only the fifty dollars, but an additional fifty dollars. And so they have their their spot already reserved for next year. So um, they have that, but the the woman had commented on the fact that she had dropped table costs to put out. And she says, oh, my goodness, she says, I didn't even need them because the tables look so great. And it was like, well, they were just freshly painted this week, so um, you know. I I think we can all be proud and and the staff as well, uh, on how well things are looking and uh working out. Uh, again, the um for the staff, uh, it is getting to that part of the season where the goose uh and duck droppings are an issue. Um, but our staff person Debbie uh did suggest, based on um one of her friends uh who lives on the lake, that they had heard uh and had success themselves with actually using unsweetened grape Kool-Aid packets in water and spraying it with a garden sprayer. And the staff feels that that actually has been very helpful. Um, you do have to reapply. Uh, it it's not a cure all by any means, but it um definitely has helped. And I think from the staff point of view, for the majority of them, they're very grateful that they do not have to use the fencing uh to uh do that each day. And even though there's been a couple of days when um, you know, that it wears off and then the pieces got moved back in and the unfortunate people who are there that participated today have more of an issue. But um, that is one of the uh things that has been a success as well, is uh that treatment for that. We did participate in the uh Holly Area Schools enrollment fair and health uh program. And uh, we partnered with uh Sue Julian and um Blue Heron Headwaters Conservancy uh at our table. And um, we were able to pass out flyers for the Turtleville as well as the woodchip program. And um, passed out quite a few flyers, there were many children who were enthusiastic about uh joining in the turtle habitat program. But as I reported, unfortunately, uh, it didn't fit with some parents uh bringing them, so for whatever reason. Um, but the woodchip program, uh, we did participate and again, thanks to Commissioner Hutches for getting the tractor out and loading uh on a particular uh last Saturday afternoon, uh, we did have some participation. I think we estimated it was like twenty yards of woodchips. Is that correct? That was able to be loaded?
Forty yards of woodchips is about uh two yards of tops.
Okay.
Not much tops.
And then the tractor broke, somebody had welded on the tractor before and it broke, so I had to quick load.
But today, you took the tractor back to your house and fixed that already. So thank you again, Commissioner Hutches. But um.
I had it rope you for ten miles an hour.
That was a noise I heard this morning.
He uh, he did have an assist by our staff person, Tom Martin, who followed along behind him, so.
Flashers going. Went forward.
Yeah.
So I was illegal.
Yeah, but um, I would also like to give kudos to uh Mel Bartzoff, our maintenance person. Um, today, as we were uh doing some work on the turtles habitats inside, um, we were doing some uh running some water and all of a sudden we sprang a leak uh under one of our bathroom sinks. And it turned out that the um faucet had corroded underneath. And so Mel had called this morning and said that due to a storm last night, he had quite a few uh trees and limbs down in his own yard that he was probably going to take the day off. And I had to call him and say, well, the next time you come in, uh, you know, bring a faucet with you. And he said, oh, I'm going to be there in an hour. So he left his own project to come here and do his, uh, he and Zach came and uh, you know, within a couple hours, they had the whole thing fixed and that, so we're grateful to to her leaving his own project and helping with that, so.
Thank you.
And I think that that is uh let's see, I think that's about it for me.
Question? Um, the mulch project, is that something that can be annual?
Or, you know, dispensing it?
Yeah, where people are encouraged to come in and.
Yeah, you know, I think what we're going to do, and this is part of our website uh program. Once we get the website up, we can make that as part of our website, that those chips are available and and the people are able to come and, you know, collect them at most any time if they want to do the digging themselves. Um, however, if they wanted to have them actually loaded into a trailer and that, we would have to make special arrangements for that or even schedule, you know, like like we did uh having a specific date for that. But I would also like to point out, thanks for reminding me, um, just last night at the Village of Holly uh council meeting, um, they did vote to um rent the tub grinder for fifteen thousand dollars. And they are going to be bringing the tub grinder out. Uh, Brian Clausen, the DPW director, when I spoke to him last night, he anticipated that probably within a week or two uh that they will have that machine out here and uh do that grinding. Uh, now, once that is done, I I would fully anticipate that we are probably going to have to open up to contractors and not just to residents, which the past time had been uh pretty much closed to contractors and was open just to residents, but um, I would be open to that.
Oh, so two things, uh, the first question I have is, I know that we had to shut down because of because it broke, tractor broke, so now that it's fixed, are we going to do it again this coming Saturday or Sunday?
I don't think we're scheduling it this Saturday, I think we're going to wait until after, correct? After the tub grinding?
It's supposed to rain Sunday afternoon. It's going to be ninety and ninety-one degrees, which is a son of a bitch.
We could do it early.
People want to work that stuff, they don't want to sit there and load their trailers about the last ninety. And also, DPW will hire their tree trimmers to come out and clear the road going back to the brush shop, so they get the tub grinder. If you drive off them, they really don't know. There was a lot of nasty brush there.
So let's, let's, I'm glad that the village is finally doing something to uh maintain that area. And I'm glad that they're going to be bringing in the grinder and and getting it done because it's, it needs to get done, it's it's long overdue, need to, need to get that done. So thank you, Commissioner Hutches, for getting that on the move, I appreciate that. And I thank the Village of Holly as well for uh working on this. But I don't want it to get like that again. Uh, it needs, we need to make sure that they they come up with some sort of schedule and I know that's something you can do, Madam Manager. We need to work with them, with their manager to, or manager and their public works director to kind of do this on a regular basis and not leave it there for too long.
I think Tom, also, one of the things that was brought up during that meeting last night is that the village has their own chipper and that I believe that Brian Clausen indicated that they might be more um able to handle more of the brush and just, you know, let the logs um be left for the tub grinder. So I think that they are themselves planning uh on using their own equipment.
That would be excellent. I would prefer that, to be honest with you. Uh, because I'd like to see that area open up a little bit more and eventually, you know, use it for other things as well. Especially when it comes in the winter, you talked a little bit about maybe the that little hill. And it's kind of hard when you have that, you know, uh, big pile of of wood there, somebody could get hurt. So I'd like to see that eventually moved away, eliminated. Uh, and I guess the only other, the only other thing I have with the with the uh with the uh, with the chips is, number one, let's hope we get something done, you know, soon before winter comes because it's right around the corner. And uh, we can, again, give out some some more chips, we had some people uh that came afterwards, said they wanted more chips.
I talked to a gentleman.
Oh, you're so good. You're so good. I know that she wanted it so badly, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
You can't catch him tomorrow, probably look at maybe high noon. Tomorrow, you call in the morning, high noon. And you'll be out there with his trailer and I'll get with you and it's topsoil you want moved.
And I guess since the village is going to be chipping their own wood, I guess they don't need our, they won't need our chips. But if they, because it's, if they want, they should take some of the chips themselves. if they want, they should take some of the chips themselves and use it within their grounds. So, I don't know, Commissioner Hutchins, maybe you can mention that to Brian?
What's that?
Ask Hutchinson, sorry. I'm sorry, Hutchinson, uh, to ask Brian to maybe come in and take some of the chips.
They did it to a truckload about two weeks ago.
Awesome. Okay.
There's about a thousand yards of chips out there, maybe. A thousand yards.
I believe you, yeah, we need to.
Yep, that's gonna be a lot more.
Yeah, it's, it's long overdue and I, I'd like to get that reduced and eventually eliminated. Or at least, you know, get to a point where it's, it's more manageable. You know, right now it's, there's a lot.
About eighty percent of that pile's brush. So when they start chipping their own, after the tub grinder is done, we'll lose eighty percent of the pile all tacky. So they'll chip it as they take it down.
That's great. That's good. Okay, so let's move right along.
Just a comment.
Sure.
I, I sense it would be nice if we had revenue generating program. Now that, and I, you know, chips to buy them at commercial retailer costs money. And I think maybe a discussion for another time that maybe we consider a small fee. If you get a yard of chips, it'd be worth five dollars. We used to charge five dollars a trucking. And we got three trucks. Because if people call and say, what color chips you got? I go, well, natural. You know, hey, are you red ones or black ones? Yeah.
It's just we have so much out there, Commissioner. I'd like to get in more, you know, but I see your point. Again, we, we are not a, uh, revenue making entity, uh, but if we can pay for itself, if we can use those dollars to help pay for the, uh, the time or manager or maintenance person or, or some other passion, then, then that would be sufficient. So.
Maybe next year. I mean.
I think it's something to look at. I mean, we, we're not, we didn't have truckloads of people lining up to, to get them.
We had three customers.
Right.
The one guy was a farmer, I know, friend of mine. He took the, you know, about forty yards of that and dumped it on his field to break up the clay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, and they had a fourteen-year double axle dump trailer behind a GMC diesel truck. And the tractor went and broke. Had to get out of three loads out of it, plus some topsoil.
Will they be coming back?
I only had that truck in one day, but he's working with Ben Rock up at Grand Lake.
All right.
For different truck.
All right. So let's move right along. Um, so I'll start. I know I always start with you, Commissioner Carl. So I'll do that one more time and then next time we'll move the other way. So Commissioner, any reports?
I, I have nothing for me. I have more of a question regarding, um, starting our phase two excavating. I thought that was a priority. We wanted to get that done immediately and haven't heard any word update on that.
Uh, I, well, I've talked, I've spoken to the manager about this and unfortunately we've had some other issues that we, we've had to address, but certainly, I know she has expressed concern to me to make sure that we're, you know, looking at it correctly. Uh, I think that if we went ahead and had, uh, you and, and, uh, Commissioner Hutchins sign, uh, do something, then like you did the last time, you might, uh, might be able to get started on the next phase with, with, with sort of develop, uh, a, uh, a request for proposal like you did and, and, and list the items that we want them to address like we did the last time.
Yeah, because the problem is that, you know, the water coming down is tonight. We've already done, so we need that.
Okay, yes. So, uh, if you, if you both gentlemen, don't mind, uh, meeting with, with the manager as soon as you can, Commissioner Hutchins and, uh, Commissioner Carl.
Can I just say though, and, and this is just a personal thing for me?
Yes.
I, I don't know that we're necessarily qualified to actually advise professionals who have been in this business for a long time on how to do their job. The, the problem comes that sometimes, and we have experienced this, they're not always good at including all the details that they need to include. But as we found with the previous, uh, time, that we had to go through the process twice and it, it was still an issue. So I don't know if this is the best process to go.
So Madam Manager, this is what I would recommend to you. Because I mean, I've done this myself and I'm not the engineer. So basically, in your, in your, uh, request for a proposal, you identify the issue. What is the issue? What is the problem? They're gonna come back and tell us, how are you going to fix this? Okay? Now, I don't know, both of you here have been here a long time. You may know what we need to do in order.
Well, the main thing is when we got involved with phase one, phase two, phase two got looked at also. So we have professionals out there seeing what the, the biggest thing was all the little details of this. The big hill and stuff is no big details. You know, getting back to ground, getting back in the grass, break down the flow of the water with, with broken concrete or stuff like that. So that's less of a technical thing than all these culvers and stuff we had here and the different grade pitches we had out here. This up the hill is a lot simpler than everything else. And like with, well, he knows what the problem is and so does everybody else.
I understand that, but it seemed to me that when we went through the process, it, it got to be a problem when we were comparing apples to apples and, you know, that kind of thing. So, you know, I, it seemed to me when we were actually discussing with the contractors, they all had their own ideas of what would work. And I don't think.
So here, here's my suggestion. Okay, after you all come up again with this proposal, uh, and we get the, we get the bids, then we could potentially set up a, a subcommittee and meet with these individuals so that we can make sure that we're apples to apples and, and ask the proper questions at that point in time. Because they are the experts and they're gonna tell us how it's going to be addressed. Okay, but we know the problem. Know the issue that needs to be done. And so they're gonna help us deal with the, with the water issue, Frank.
We went all through this once already.
Yes.
So the second time would be easier.
So, and the other, the other thing that I would ask and make this a requirement in your proposal, that if we're going to rec, if you, if you all come up and make a recommendation, because I'm gonna ask if you recommend something to the commission, ask them to come to the meeting, please, so that we can ask questions and, and know that, that would be, that is going to be a, a requirement that they come to the meeting and answer questions. Okay, let's, let's get started on this. I, I, I think we, we've got enough and, and we'll see. But that's a good point, Commissioner. So it's up to you all. Make some time, meet with the manager and get started. Okay? All right, moving right along. Uh, anything else, uh, Commissioner Carl? Uh, Commissioner Hutchins?
The tractor's unfi, is fixed again and, uh, we'll see what happens after the tub grinder. Best time to haul chips and topsoil, spray a pole. It's a pain in the butt. You know, everybody wants to get their projects done. So when we used to load, we, we do like two, two Saturdays a month. So I'd say starting next April, like May first, we start doing, uh, April, one in April and one in May, chips and topsoil. And then we do one in, uh, 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 September and October or October and November for chips and topsoil. Well, now we gotta wait for the tub grinder to come out. And also with phase two of the road, we gotta wait for literally it done. So we have a time block. Work on that road a lot. We have to freeze it.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Nope, okay. Thank you, sir. All right.
Just a point of information, uh, so the commissioner knows the last, uh, baseball game that's scheduled, uh, is on September twenty ninth. That's the last date.
September twenty ninth. Anything else, sir?
Uh, yeah, yep. Um, we had our, um, inaugural meeting of the social media and website committee on, uh, July twenty second. In your packets, you do have a copy of the draft minutes, uh, the draft, because the committee has not, uh, yet met to approve them. Um, so we focused on creating a professional and user-friendly website along with a stronger social media presence. So residents know what's available in our parks and when events are happening. We identified priorities for the new website, including detailed park and beach information, interactive maps, water quality updates, facility rental details with the option of online reservations, disc golf course information, volunteer and donation opportunities, and quick at a glance updates like beach status. We also discuss, uh, discussed a clear process for updates. Commissioners set, set the policy and direction and staff handle daily updates with monthly, weekly, seasonal, and as needed posting schedules. We will also make sure the site is fully ADA compliant well before the twenty twenty-seven deadline to do so. On the vendor side, we're leaning towards using a, the professional government website provider for, uh, several reasons. Uh, ADA compliance, reliability, and the ease of updates. We reached out to Civic Plus, immunity code, and revised. Um, we did have a scheduled meeting to talk to Civic Plus yesterday. However, that meeting was rescheduled for today, which was then rescheduled for tomorrow. Um, I, I understand that, um, I'm going to be available. I'm not sure if manager Blanchard, uh, will be. Um, I also, uh, sent the invite to Commissioner Earl. Um, so we'll have more information after that, uh, meeting. And then we'll get the second meeting scheduled and going. Uh, but it was a really a interesting and a productive meeting, in my opinion. Um, we, we, we went through a lot of different ideas and what we thought that needed to be on the website. Um, and I'm, I'm excited to continue moving forward. Um, so that's the, um, oh, I did have one more comment. Um, oh, no, that was already covered in my, that's it.
I, I, I just quickly glanced and it's really good stuff in here, uh, Commissioner. I would like to recommend that when we, well, as I put together something for you all and, and you will take a look and approve it, uh, a request for proposal for people who are interested in, in, uh, applying to do our website, that we give them this information and, uh, and that they, uh, that they hear and read. And then also probably meet one, one time with the commissioners as a whole.
Oh, yeah.
So that the rest of the commission can add any, any comment that they would like. Okay.
Actually, any of the commissioners would be welcome to attend if they wanted to.
Well, you need to be careful because then it could be an, uh, open meetings violation if you have more yellow quarrel.
But we could post it.
You could post it. And I believe you are posting these.
We are.
But, um.
It is. It would not be an open meeting violation because the meeting is posted.
Okay, very good. All right. And so anyone who's interested, please do so. Okay, so, uh, I have a, I have a couple of items that I, that I want to talk about. I promised to be three. So, you know, I'm into budgets. You know, I'm always talking about making sure that we don't over budget. I'm the, I'm the, the party boo boo, as they say. So there is a copy of our, of our budget here for the, for the, for the month of July. And, and you can see already that with eight, with eight percent of the, of the year, uh, over, uh, I'm looking at, uh, park salaries and, uh, it's like, it's at twenty-two point seven four percent. So that's, that's kind of high. Uh, so we gotta be careful there.
Are we looking at this?
Budget, there's a, a budget. Give us, excuse me. It's a budget report. And then there's a, a detail. A detail. So she does give us monthly reports on the budget so we could see. So you will know where we stand. And overall, though, overall, we're doing very, very well. Uh, when you look at the bottom line, we're only at five point three eight percent when you look at everything together. And we're at only eight percent of the year gone by. Of course, this is just the month of July.
Yeah.
Okay, August is right around the corner. And again, uh, we, we are doing well. Of course, we haven't done any of the mega projects that, that, that are coming up. And so that's one of the reasons it's, it's so low. Again, uh, I read these things as a, as a former finance and budget analyst, I'm always looking at the numbers. So let's, let's do our best to make sure that we stay here. Uh, okay. Uh, the other thing I want to say about the, about the finance is that we said at one of our meetings that we wanted a quarterly, uh, report with our accountants. And we wanted her to come in and give us a report to talk to us about any questions that we may have about the quarterly report. Uh, Madam Manager, can you ask, uh, our accountant to please be ready to, at our September meeting? Because I guess that's when, uh, so July, August, and September, um, to be ready to give a report to us on a quarterly report. So. I mean, I'm really, you know what? Because September is not gonna be over. So it may have to wait until October, October. We can wait till October because September won't be over yet. So we can wait till October for the quarterly.
I, I will, um, ask her. Uh, I, I think that, um, most of the commission knows she does have some limitations due to, uh, some health issues uh, on actually meeting, possibly, uh, not, not with people, but location, uh, and that. So, um, the form of that meeting might have to be online for her or something else. So.
Absolutely.
We can, we can maybe Zoom. That might be something. It, it will, it's, will affect, uh, won't affect it. Perfect then. Then let's do a, let's do a Zoom for her.
But I, I, uh, when I meet with her next, I will ask her about that and, uh, bring that back.
Okay, yeah, because September, at the end of September, there'll be three months. And so then in October, she should have enough time to, uh, to put together that report so that she can give us a report in October.
And then we'll make our adjustments.
And we make adjustments. Yes, sir.
But my understanding is, is you want to meet with her personally.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes, and we can do that by Zoom. And we're willing to do that by Zoom.
Q and A. Of course, you can answer.
Yes, we need to, we need to, we, we promised, promised our residents, we promised ourselves that we would stay on top of this. And, uh, we want to make sure. So we will work with her on, on that stuff. Okay, so that's, that's one. Uh, the turtle habitat, I cannot thank everybody enough who worked on that. Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. It is beautiful. You all know how much I've grown attached to our turtles. I come every afternoon to make sure, uh, Rosie, our box turtle, has a little walk before the end of the night. It helps her with her health. She's gotten better. And she's eating more and more. So when y'all leave, I'm gonna put her outside for a little while. Just for a few minutes and let her walk. Uh, did she get any, any walk today? Does she walk today at all?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because we, we were all busy.
Okay. And we do watch her. So I'll just let her under for, for a few minutes. Okay, so, uh, so thank you all. The only suggestion that I would make it is if somebody has, uh, uh, some creative ideas to maybe paint the outside, uh, put some flowers or some turtles or whatever, just to, I don't know, trees, anything. I think that would be so awesome if the, if our arts class or somebody like that could, you know, be willing to volunteer, you know, and provide the paint. That would be awesome. Excellent. Just a suggestion, Madam Manager. It's not a big priority, but if we could, that would be, I think that would be really kind. Uh, holidays. I know that Commissioner Hutchins mentioned it and so did you. But let me, uh, I am a, I am a member of the holidays committee. And, uh, so it's September sixth and seventh. We won't, we won't be here enough, enough to promote that. But please, 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 to our residents that are out there, please join us, uh, all day long. We will have, uh, various events that are happening in the city to, uh, celebrate, uh, holidays. I understand that our, uh, Village of Holly has been in existence for a hundred and sixteen years. And, uh, holidays itself, um, I think it's been maybe ten or fifteen years since it's been, it, it was, it was created. But, uh, it, it came out as a, as a, as a result of, of another committee or event, which I won't mention the name. Uh, as a result of that. So holidays has been around for, for, for longer than ten years. But for the most part, the title holidays is, is what they, is what they use. So they're gonna have, uh, baseball. They're going to have in, uh, let me look at that here. They're going to have a, uh, an authentic, uh, a vintage baseball tournament that's at eleven eight and that'll be at Cyclone Park. Uh, we're also gonna have also. Uh we're also gonna have, also on Sunday, continue to have our farmer's market at Crepo Park. And uh also on Sunday, the eighth, American Legion is having a, a pancake breakfast between eight-thirty and uh and twelve-thirty. And uh for extra parking on Saturday, uh people can park at the Holly Presbyterian Church, which is, which is located at two oh seven East Maple. Now, I stepped, I stepped over uh Saturday, September seventh. And again, we're, we're having all kinds of events uh started at nine AM. We are having a uh color uh run, which begins at Crepo Park. Anybody's interested? Uh you know, please go to our website. Or you can go to the city's website, or Village's website, and you can get more information on that. I know I get, I get those titles. And then uh there will be a holidays parade at eleven AM, and that'll be exciting. And then they're also going to have a free children's uh treasure hunt, and that's at the Hadley House Museum. And uh then, of course, we're gonna participate in the community playdate at Crepo Park. And uh, and from twelve to eleven, uh from eleven to twelve, we'll have a moose uh beer tent. Oh, no, I, I take that back. It is from twelve to eleven. So uh the moose uh beer tent will be there. And then at three PM uh on Saturday, uh they will have live uh stage dance uh performance in Crepo Park. So there's so many really cool things that are happening. We're gonna have live music. Uh we're gonna have a family street dance on, on Battle Alley. Uh we're going to uh have a uh main stage band. Guess they're called Zang? Little with Zang. Anybody know them? So, so Zang will be our, our uh, our, our stage band. And of course, there will be fireworks over the water tower on Broad Street ending that day. So a lot of great activities to help celebrate our wonderful community and uh and thank the people of this community. So it's an all-around family type of event. And I encourage our residents to, to please uh, please call, please join.
This is best of these, mainly Saturdays?
It's Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, September the seventh, they'd start at nine AM until eleven PM throughout the day. And we will have this, this is all being posted on the city, on the Village's website, excuse me, on the Village's website. So if you go to the Holly uh Village website, you'll see this. We'll also have in the newspaper that's coming up. I was working on that. And then on Sunday from eight-thirty until uh, until four PM uh there'll be events throughout the day. And of course, one of the biggest ones is that vintage baseball tournament. Just, I hear it's a really, really cool. They'll be dressed up in, in vintage baseball uniforms and things of that nature. So it's, it's a, it's an interesting event and one that, if you haven't uh seen, please come on by.
Is there a cyclone right there?
It's at Cyclone. It'll be at Cyclone. Yeah, cause it's, it's a, this is a village of Holly, but we're working together with them. And both Commissioner Hutchins and I are members of the uh, of the, of the committee. And uh, and so I also give the reports about what we're doing, and so does the, so does Commissioner Hutchins does that. And uh, and then the last thing that I wanna talk about, and I know, I know that, you know, we don't need anything else to do. But uh I have not forgotten, it's just that we've been super busy, and that is in the development of a, of goals, of a five-year goal plan for us. And what I'd like to do is because everyone is super busy, is maybe break it up into one, maybe two, three sessions. Or maybe uh we can meet for an hour, an hour and a half. Uh and I'm gonna start probably either in September, October, on with the manager and see what our schedule looks like. And the first item would be, let's, let's prepare a mission statement. What is our mission statement? And I know that we have something on the, uh, on our parks master plan. But let's, again, let's revisit the master plan, make sure that we're implementing that, that we're doing what the master plan says. But that's gonna be key. I know, I saw, you gotta, you gotta do that.
Do this year.
Yes, yes. So uh I'll, I'll work with the manager and come up with a date, so we can come up with a uh, with something. We'll, we'll get that done. And then um, and then maybe uh, maybe the next month, we can do goals. And then next month, maybe finalize it. So just cut it up into pieces so that it's doable and that it doesn't take an all-day event for all of us. I know we're all busy. And uh like this meeting, for example, I tried to keep it down to two hours and I'm already gone three, so two and a half. Anyways, so that is all I have to report. If there's any questions, uh let me know after the meeting. I'd be more than happy to answer the questions. So thank you all. Thank you for your time. Uh let's look, let's go now to item number ten, which is public comment. Again, members of the public can address the commission, once recognized by the chairperson, for items listed on this agenda only. Uh comments are limited to four minutes. The commission um may amend or extend this time by up to an additional four minutes uh by majority vote. Uh prior to uh addressing the commission, members of the public are asked to state their name and street name for the record. And uh since we have no members of the public, I will move, move on from this item. And with that, I'm going to item number eleven, and that is adjournments, and I hear adjourn the meeting at nine PM. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the audience for joining us. Thank you.